For the meeting to order, Board of Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, at seven ten P. M. We're having some technical difficulties, our Facebook Live is not working tonight, so our regular meeting is just gonna be covered by camera. You'll start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Move next to the minutes of previous meeting, somebody move the June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen Town Council meeting?
So moved, second.
Discussion, corrections. Roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Need somebody to move the June twenty first, two thousand and eighteen Special Town Council meeting?
So moved, second.
Discussion, corrections. Roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Need somebody to move the June twenty first, two thousand and eighteen Special Town Council meeting?
So moved, second.
Discussion, corrections. Roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Obstand.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Somebody move the June twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen Special Joint Meeting of Town Council and Board of Police Commissioners?
So moved with one correction, it's page three, which is page twenty-one in our whole packet, it's about the middle of the page, where it talks about the insurance premium, instead of fifteen thousand, it should be fifteen hundred.
Any other corrections? Roll call?
I need a second.
Second, give me a second.
Second.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Obstand.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Correspondence Citizen Statements, None, Unfinished Business, Lake Gaylord's Water Treatment Plant Sanitary Sewer Discharge Agreement, tabled from June fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
The Water Authority asked that, that item be tabled again, they're still analyzing their future flow needs, and they may modify their request, so it just has to be tabled, and they'll get back to us with that number.
Do they need a date it's been tabled to?
Pardon me?
Or how long are they requesting it be tabled?
I'm gonna check with them, if there's an issue, I'm hoping to have it back by the August meeting, if there's an issue, we'll either have to table it or take it off the agenda.
Play it safe, how about if we tell them September, and give them a, you know, this way they don't have to do the summer, and we only meet once, so...
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue with them, I know they're doing a, they're starting a little bit, they're not in a rush, I mean, and we're looking down the road, this is, the agreement will have to be effective in the middle of two thousand and eighteen, so we have plenty of time. Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion to, I'd make a motion to table this until the September two thousand and nineteen, eighteen meeting?
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is items, nothing business, nothing, citizen statements, petitions on the Water Pollution Control Authority. Moving to the regular Town Council meeting, agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the agenda, add item eleven B, nomination of David Plumbo to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Tom Cat, Tony Catapano on the Police Commission.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for item number
fifteen Executive Session to add at the end of that and pending litigation.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for item number fifteen Executive Session to add at the end of that and pending litigation.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for item number fifteen Executive Session to add at the end of that and pending litigation.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion, I'd like to make a motion to move thirteen H to follow the executive session.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGleone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, next is reports, Boards, Committees and Commissions, Economic Development, Commission Report from Roger Selway.
Yeah, there is a printed report in your packet from the last meeting, rather detailed chronological events at Roger busy meeting with people, and there's some development items in there, but I think he's actually here on the, later on in the agenda, talk about the concept for developing a blueprint, so maybe if there were just any questions on that, we'll dispense with that full report, and so to try to reserve some time for that presentation, but there are some, some highlights in, in that report that I hope will pan out for the town of North Branford, and we'll have some success. Are there any specific questions he certainly could answer for you?
Probably cover it in the rest of, and there's other presentations.
Yeah, okay.
Next is Park and Recreation Signs.
Park and Recreation Committee met last week, several of the items that they talked about, they had a Eagle Scout project that was done, it was one bocce court, the Eagle Scout that did it, because of time constraints of turning eighteen, he originally was gonna do two, but he wouldn't have enough time to do two of them, so he did do one, which is next to the tennis court area there, but then they have another Eagle Scout that came forward with an Eagle Scout project, and he is going to do the second bocce court there. Franny and Lauren looked at, you know, signed off on the first one with all the work being done, and so the second one will be, follow the same guidelines as the first one. The basketball courts at Northford Park have been opened, they're completed, I know a lot of people were thinking that they weren't done yet, or why they weren't there, because it was all painted, but they wanted, they didn't open them until they made sure all of the work was done, and it passed the inspection. They are having an issue with the court that was done at Stanley T. Williams, and having issues with the contractor that did that, I'm not sure if they've got the town attorney involved in that so far, did they contact you to?
I'm working on this stuff.
Okay, okay, great, because the whole idea was to get that done so that they could use it for their summer program, and they have not been able to do that yet, because of issues that they've had with the contractor. And they also talked about the signs that we already voted on, about the welcome sign and the park signs, and I, I believe our motion was, like, we were okay to go ahead with it, depending on whatever the Park and Rec voted on, and they are going with the blue signs with the white lettering like we, but they wanna add the town emblem to the welcome sign, so here's a little rendition that Carrie did, the difference is, is that it, it looks fine with this, with the new, because it goes up in the middle, as the other ones were just curved all the way across, so I think everyone can just, Carrie has done a great job, and gave us pictures of what we approved, and then what Park and Rec would like.
And actually, it was the EDC group that I brought this to, just to keep them updated, and that's where the comment came up about incorporating the town seal on the welcome sign, so I just wanted for the council to have the opportunity to see what it would look like, since we didn't have a rendering with the seal on it, so the first two pages are examples showing the welcome signs with the seal, and then pages three and four are without, which is what you had seen at the last meeting.
Right.
And one of the big differences to point out is just the height of the signs as well, so with the seal, it does raise the signs up quite a bit, to six, maybe even seven feet, so I had shown Franny this today, and we talked, he pointed that out to me, which was a good catch, so if you did like it with the town seal, we may wanna bring it down a little bit, but it does kind of change the feel for the welcome sign, it's a much taller sign, as opposed to a lower sign, which is what the town had.
Right, but it would also match the park signs then, the design of the park signs?
Yes.
Would it change the cost?
No.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm fine with it, as, because, because there is a budget number for them to stay within, and how many welcome signs you get, and how many of the park signs that they do, in regards to it, it's, it's the budget, and they would just all be uniform with the, with the emblem on this town seal on it, and everything else.
And that was the other thing I just wanted to run by the council, is that at the last meeting you had talked about prioritizing some of the welcome signs, so it was a suggestion to start with the welcome signs on the East Haven line and the Guilford line, which would be on Route eighty, and then up in Northford by the Ice Pavilion.
Yeah, I mean...
Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I know DOT has to approve some of these also, correct?
Yes.
Because they're all state highways, and how much clearance you have, and everything else.
Right, I've been in contact with them, and they're fine with it, I just have to fill out the paperwork and meet them on site, but especially the East Haven location and the Northford location, they're replacing signs that had been there, so that's not an issue, the Guilford location would be on where County Road meets Route eighty, so that's in a little bit from the town line, but that's kind of a small triangle of grass space where there's clearance, good sight lines and everything, so that would be fine with them.
Very good, thank you.
So I don't think we need to amend our motion, because we had already voted with it, depending on the approval of the other departments, so, as long as, I mean...
And the cost hasn't changed.
And the cost didn't change, so I think we're good with it. And, oh, the van grant, the, they applied for a grant for two vans for the senior center, and it looks like they're going to be approved for one, for sure, and they're hoping for the second one, but at least, that's what they think that they're gonna get, is at least one of those to replace, and that's it.
Before we get off that, getting back to the seal, what, what, why did Economic Development think we should put the seal on the sign?
So it matched the park signs, because the, the park signs have the, that's the version that Park and Rec liked, which is the last page in this packet, the Northfords example.
I don't have big enough glasses, what year does this say you were in the, we were incorporated as a town?
On the town seal, I don't...
Seal?
Eighteen something?
Eighteen thirty-one.
So see, that's the other thing, so when you drive around looking at all these signs, some of the towns put when they're settled, so you're giving up an awful lot of years here, because we were settled, in reality, the same time Branford was, which was sixteen forty-four, this is what, after the North Branford parishioners petitioned the Branford church, and asked if they could start their own parish here, because it was too hard to get to church in the winter, so that's how the town split, and that was, you know, two hundred years after the town was settled, so, you know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I like history, and I think we're giving up an awful lot of years, when we've been here.
Yeah, but it wasn't North Branford until eighteen thirty-one, that's, that's the, I think that's the issue.
It wasn't the town of North Branford, though.
And isn't this our official town?
Right, right, right.
Is it?
Oh, you guys are all chickens.
Actually, you know, I think the, personally, I think the other sign looked better, because it, North Branford is by itself...
Well, just so you know, just so you know, Robert Rose was one of the original founders of Branford, okay, and next year, when I open my winery on the farm, it's what's left of his piece of Branford, only in North Branford, for three hundred and seventy-five years ago.
And I saw it on the sign at the, at the ice cream shop.
I just think that we've given up a lot of history, and there are an awful lot of towns that put settled on their signs, but I, you know what, we've beat this for like eighteen years already, so, it doesn't matter.
Hey.
The sign I put in front of my, the sign I put in front of my establishment will be historically correct.
You can make a motion to set, change it to settle?
No, I, you know what, we'd have a huge debate and argument, and I already spent a lot of money trying to find out exactly when we were settled, so, forget it, it's not arguable, we can't win it, so I give up.
Thank you, Rose. Police Commission?
Police Commission does not have a regular meeting in July, however, they are having a special meeting tomorrow evening.
Fire Commission?
No, no meeting this month.
Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
I think that was kind of taken care of, that was taken care of in our earlier meeting when we had the joint session with them.
Town Planning and Goals Subcommittee?
Town Planning and Goals Subcommittee did not meet this month, however, the forms have been sent to all the department heads, the forms for a needs assessment, and five-year plan for infrastructure and equipment, and I have to give Carrie Duquesne and her secretary a lot of credit for helping getting that a lot, so, that, those forms are out to the department heads, and they're due at the end of the summer, I think the date was August thirty-first.
Next is Pub, Public Safety Communications Committee?
Did not meet.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Nothing interesting.
East Shore Health District? Next is Town Manager's Report, North Branford.
Well, Mayor, if we could go back a step to H. Planning and Zoning Commission, Carrie took the time to put together a brief memo for seven H regarding the conserva, Plan of Conservation and Development, and, and the necessary step of having a review committee, so she had kind of outlined it, her thought process in what that might look like, so I think it would be important for the council to, to see that, review that, and, and potentially have your, your input, it's just a, a guide at this point, but she's looking for in point, uh, in, input as how to proceed once that process unfolds.
And what I, what I'd really like is to have a representative from the Town Council on the review committee, so the proposals that are coming in for the Plan of Conservation and Development are due Thursday, so I'm hopeful that we'll get at least three, maybe more, if we get more than four, I'm suggesting that we, through the Planning and Zoning Commission, put together a larger review committee, to then come up with a, a list of at least three to interview, and I'd like to have someone from the Town Council on both of those review committees, if possible, just since...
When is your meeting?
Well, we haven't set the dates yet, so the proposals are due July twelfth, and then once I have the committee formed, then we'll decide how many proposals to, to review.
When do you think your meeting would be, evenings, afternoons, days?
Um, I guess whenever it works, I'm sorry, I don't have a great answer, I mean, probably the, the...
Yeah, people have to do an evening, and to get everybody, and pick a date that not every board and commission is meeting, which is gonna be tough.
So I'd like to, again, if we have more than five proposals, meet once with the larger committee at the end of July, and then again, have the interviews, say, the first or second week of August, so that we have someone on board by the end of August.
I could meet.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, next is Town Manager's Report, MBIS Project Update and Status Report?
Yeah, I was hoping optimistically to have, you know, a full report for you for July, for the, for this meeting, and unfortunately, we didn't hit that, we've hit a few unforeseen issues, I met with Bill Chody, he's been obviously interfacing with Perfect Temp, which is the company that's up there doing that, they ran into issues with the two larger units, the rooftop units number ten and rooftop unit number thirteen, which are the two larger units, rooftop unit ten has eight compressors in it, and only four are working, rooftop unit thirteen has sixteen compressors and only eight working, or actually only four working up there, so, unlike the other smaller units they've been going through and fixing, and it was part of the scope, there was, there was easier fixes in terms of refrigerant or electrical switches or something like that, that was able to recognize and fix, these other issues, they're not able to pinpoint, and it may be with the control system or something happening that's not been picked up or identified at this point, so, those are the two main issues that, so we're waiting for a quote back from Perfect Temp to see what additional work and repair needs to be done for those two units, plus there are, I believe, five actuators inside the, the duck work, within the, some of the, the rooms in the classrooms that need to be looked at, and, you know, so, the new date is August first, to try and get that complete, try to get that work done, get a final accounting to you on that point, and then the, the process would be to wrap that up, see what the final expenses are for, for the project, and then move into getting ABS to fix all of the, fine tune all of the control issues, and then once that's done, he would seek out and hire a new company for air balancing, I guess the same, he's looking in his records, this is Bill Chody, to bring back the same air balancer that was there from the beginning at, when they commissioned the system, to really get us back to square one, as though it was, is a new building, so, we have to do the, finish the repairs, which, again, these two large units, I'm not sure how long it'll be, but we're, we're pushing Perfect Temp to get this done by August, and then I'll have an accounting, and we're, we're in pretty good shape with respect to, to how it's been trending, as you recall, the council had, had a budget of two ninety-four, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, we've expended thus far, before these, before this new quote, about eighty-nine thousand for the project, so, I don't know what the number's gonna be for these larger units and these compressors, but I, I hope to wrap that up and get the final accounting and have a balance in that fund burned out.
And where were we with the, how did we do with the roof with those, like, severe downpours we had?
Good, knock on, yeah, we're, we're, we're good, I keep asking Bill every week, every, every, every shower, every storm, it's been dry, there are still occasions when there is a significant rainfall with a driving wind, but even those, I think Bill has not seen that, because I think what happened was, there was a significant negative air pressure in, in, in the building, meaning that it was, it was, you open a door, you couldn't open a door, it was pulling, pulling in, so around some of those units, like the far end, where, where it connects to the auditorium, where that big unit was over the hallway, there were some issues with seams and so forth that were, were underneath, that were just, you know, pulling in waters, but, the, the report I have from Bill is that everything's, everything's been dry, so the envelope, to my knowledge, is, is held up well, and I think the negative air pressure reduction, and to go slightly positive, and that's why the air balancer has to come in, is to try and get us to a point where we're, we're almost neutral, slightly positive, is better than being in a negative pressure situation, from Blue Island.
So do we, do we know that we were ever right?
I don't know that we were ever right, I wasn't here, right, so...
Right, so, I'm not sure I would bring in the guy that came there, so, how old is this school?
Well, I mean, uh, well, your renovation finished in two thousand and nine, right?
So, the le, the roof leaked, like I said, and this air conditioning system not only cost us a fortune to run, but it's only been running halfway, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, the Board of Ed has been paying somebody to maintain this thing, which they obviously weren't doing, 'cause all these things should have been fixed when one broke, not a hundred items break.
Right, well, yeah, and that's the...
So, I'm not sure I would use anybody that was part of the original, I, I mean, I just don't know, I mean, you would think somebody could balance the air, but...
I mean, eight out of sixteen compressors are down, four out of, uh...
Yeah.
But, we've had a guy doing maintenance there, twice a year, going and checking everything, and it's like, okay, who was checking the eight ones or whatever that weren't running?
Yeah, well, I, I think that we were discuss, has been discussed here at this council level, going forward after all of these repairs are done, that, that a Perfect Temp, or, or someone like that...
Right.
...be the service contractor going forward on a, on a regular basis, or, you know, twice a year to, to maintain, plus the fact that they have worked with Horizon Engineering on having remote access to the system to look at it as well, so I think we can, you know, improve that situation going forward, and I guess in the file, there, there should be some notes or someone to know on this, this, whoever we hire, I don't even have the company's name, but whoever did the certification of the air balancing, whether or not there was a report in there that, that it was, it was, you know, a baseline, a baseline type of...
So the people fixing it, this Perfect Temp, they're not capable of balancing the system?
I don't, it, it didn't appear that way from, from, from Bill, that that was an expertise that was a little higher than Perfect Temp can do, so, the other thing is, back to the, the yard, large units with the air compressors, the system seems to be working okay on what is running now, so, the question back to Horizon has, Horizon Engineering has been, has it been, was it over engineered for, for the amount of compressors in that unit? And it, and so I've asked them to go back to, to study and review that, because it really depends on where those compressors, what service, what areas of the building they're serving, and I believe, they're, they would only need sixteen compressors if it was in high demand times, ninety, really hot days, that you would need all sixteen going, and, and you're really gonna hit those when, when you're not in school, you're gonna hit it like we just hit, June, July, August.
But on a really hot day, eight are working overtime, and that's where your electricity bill's going out of sight.
Yeah, so it wa, it was just a question that came up, as we, as we recognized that the system seems to be handling itself now, at a fr... So the question back to Horizon has, Horizon Engineering has been, has it been, was it over engineered for the amount of compressors in that unit? And so I've asked them to go back to study and review that, because it really depends on where those compressors, what service, what areas of the building they're serving. And I believe they would only need 16 compressors if it was in high demand times, 90 really hot days, that you would need all 16 going. And you're really gonna hit those when you're not in school. You're gonna hit it like we just hit, June, July, August.
But on a really hot day, eight are working overtime, and that's where your electricity bill's going out of sight.
Yeah, so it was just a question that came up as we recognized that the system seems to be handling itself now at a fraction of the capacity. So I've asked Horizon Engineering to look at that, to see where we are.
How long has this been going on?
Well, since it was done in 2009.
Since we took possession of the school, basically.
Eight years.
And who owns the responsibility?
We do.
Well, the Board of Ed has the responsibility of maintaining.
Well, I mean, the town, the town of North Bradford does.
I meant, I meant, I meant north Bradford, basically.
Right. I do know, Al, that in their budget for this current school year, they, because it was talked about during their budget workshops, they do have in their maintenance on, especially at MBIS, but for all of the schools, for their systems, for twice a year. But I do not know which company, you know, if they put it out to bid or if someone just has the contract. I don't know which company has that.
Well, is it maintenance for systems that are fully working or continued maintenance on what happens to be working at the moment?
Is this a, is this a, an engineering fault, component fault, training fault?
A little bit of everything.
Competence fault?
I think it's, I think it's a system, and I see it in some of the houses I build, the systems are so smart, they're much smarter than most human beings, and nobody can run them. And we got a smart system that, you know, a few people can run, but apparently not the people that we had watching this for us, you know?
So I would think, I mean, I wasn't here at that time, but I would think the people that have designed it or installed it are the people that are supposed to train us in how to maintain it and operate it, right?
Yeah, and so I think we've got a better handle on it going forward, once, again, trying to get back to square one where this is performing optimally and efficiently, and that there are no more, you know, leaks in the envelope. So you have a contract going forward with Eagle River on the roof itself and the membrane, and then a contract with Perfect Temp for the system and knowledge and access to, remote access, the brains, the computer, for any alarms or anything that goes on.
And they're gonna, they're gonna monitor that?
They're gonna do that, and they're gonna do the belts and the hoses and what have you. So, you know, and I think we'll get to the, we'll get to the, hopefully, an answer to the issue of, gee, you know, if 16 air compressors, yeah, okay, fix them, and then maybe that's what the design called for, for maximum operation, then fine, we'll fix all of those and we'll put everything back together and then start from scratch, start from square one.
And buy a new system? It'd be time to get a new system then.
Well, what we have to do is...
Learn from this and if and when we do the high school, you know, and believe me, the trend in air conditioning is to have efficient heating and air conditioning, have efficient equipment, but it's actually moving back to, okay, I'm hot in here, I'm gonna turn the thermostat and be cooler, and I'm cold in here and I'm gonna turn it and be hotter, and stop having somebody in India, you know, reading something on a computer screen that's trying to tell us what's going on with the weather in New England. And it just, it doesn't work, it's costing us a fortune. And, you know, we just, we can't, can't do that again. But I don't know what we do with this one.
I mean, we're getting there, and then, again, I hope to push them to get to August and get this reset and then move on, so it's, you know, it's troubleshooting or maintenance when it pops up. But, you know, the reports I'm getting from that, that there are no more leaks, or if there are, they're very, very minimal type leaks, that I think may be from some window issues and directional rain or something like that. But I think we've come a long way. So I'll put it back on the August 7th agenda.
Next is Community Events Presentations. Presentation by Roger Salway, Developing a Blueprint for Advanced Manufacturing.
We met in my second day, and now we just celebrated my second month, so I just wanted to bring an update. As Michael mentioned, over the past eight to 10 weeks, we've conducted, with help from Michael and Carrie and others here in the town hall, over 40 interviews. And we are treating essentially our business friends as customers. So we've been talking to small manufacturers, we've been talking to the largest manufacturers, and as you know, we have a representative from Honeywell here today, and I've met their general manager, and I've met their vice president of global marketing, and they wanted to actually come and share some of the concerns we're gonna talk about. And it has been somewhat disturbing in my meetings that we are hearing from both small and large manufacturers that there's a real frustration in being unable to hire and locate trained manufacturing technology experts. So we're finding situations where the demand is there, but they can't meet the demand because they can't find candidates to hire. So I've been talking back at Hartford with the Economic Development Group, we've talked with Representative Veen and others to try to see what is actually being done at the state level to address this deficiency or gap in the availability of advanced manufacturing expertise. Because unless we modernize our manufacturing, it's gonna perish. And if it perishes and population goes down, obviously tax income goes down with it, and that's a kind of scenario that economic development doesn't sort of sustain. So what we've put together is a very first pass blueprint that I think you all had copies. And it's a, it's an approach to do some research led by a group that used to be in charge of the Presidential Manufacturing Council in Washington. And the effort is to try to identify what can be done, how would it be done, where would it be done, and what it would cost. And the blueprint essentially would be used to present at the federal level, Economic Development Administration, that supports essentially investment in advanced manufacturing education. I'd just like to introduce, if I could, Dean Page. Dean is generously giving his time from Honeywell, and just wants to mention Honeywell's position on this same problem.
Good evening, Council. I started in this business, electronic manufacturing, back in 1985, in a very small company in Bloomfield, Connecticut. And we did everything by hand, manually. And over time, we found we couldn't compete. And we tried to automate, but the business didn't really want to spend the money on automation, because it's expensive, you have to hire talent. We had talent, but we didn't have the capital to buy the equipment that we needed. So the simple solution was to move the factory, which they did, they moved it to Mexico. And I moved everything that we had down there, and a year later, they shook my hand, said thank you for your service, and they didn't need me anymore. And I thought, that was it, that was the end of the world, I was never gonna find another job. Well, that business struggled in Mexico for a few years, and the quality was so bad that they ended up losing their customers, and they went out of business. So that was the story of my first job in the industry. So after 10 years of being at that company, I got a job at Firelight Notify, wasn't owned by Honeywell at the time, it was owned by the Pittway Corporation. And they did a lot of things manually as well. And they also started their automation path, they had some automation tests, that's where I work. I work in automating the test process, which is to verify that the product that is manufactured works correctly before we put it in a box and ship it to the customer. So when we started there, we had a lot of manual processes, and our test times were probably around 20 minutes or more per panel, and we were probably about $150 million business at the time. Today, with virtually the same headcount, employees approximately 700, we're a half a billion dollar business, and our test times are now four minutes. So we did all that through automation on the test side. And I have a team of nine people that work for me, two technicians, seven engineers. Only two of them are younger than me, and I'm 52. So I don't have a bench. And to get to the next level of automation, which we have to keep going, we have to now mechanize how we transport product through the plant, we have to keep reducing our cycle times, because if we don't, we're gonna lose out to China and Mexico. China and Mexico don't have a lot of innovation, they're just cheap hands. We have brains, and with brains, we can win. So that's the problem that I see. When I took over the Test Engineering Department, I had to rebuild it, I had to hire people. I went through approximately 120 resumes, I did 50 phone interviews, I whittled it down to maybe 25 or so people, all to hire three people. And I got lucky, I managed to get a couple of really smart guys, way smarter than me, they make me look good, which is, which is great, because I'm not the smartest, sharpest tool in the tool chest. But we don't have a bench, and the educational system, I interview guys with bachelor's degrees and master's degrees that don't know what I learned from Wyndham Regional Vocational Technical School, where I went to high school. So the analogy I like to use is, let's say we're trying to build, we're a fine cabinet maker, and we're trying to build fine cabinets, and we're trying to hire a cabinet maker, but we can't find one. So instead, we hire a general carpenter. He comes to work the first day, he opens his toolbox, he's got a tape measure in there, he knows how to read it, he knows how to use it. He has a crosscut saw, he knows how to use it. He's got a level, he knows how to use it. Okay, we can teach him how to make a cabinet. But these guys come in to me, I interview them, I open their toolbox, and there's nothing in there. I can't hire them. Simple, basic, electrical principles they do not understand. They recognize circuits, I can draw a circuit, and they remember the formula for that circuit, and they'll get the answer right. But if I change the circuit in any minor way, they can't answer the question, because they don't know how it works. So at this point, we are way behind. My, I'm a long distance runner, and I've run many marathons, about eight marathons, and I don't do it anymore, but I still run to stay in shape. Matter of fact, I don't like running anymore, it's very painful, I'm very slow. But the reason I do it is because I like being in shape. And it's much easier to stay in shape than it is to get in shape. And right now, we're out of shape. So there are simple answers, but there's no easy answers. It's gonna be a lot of work. And if we don't start, we'll never get there. So what's the famous Chinese proverb there, right? The journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step. We need to take the first step and realize that it's gonna be painful and it's gonna hurt, but nothing worth having ever comes easy. And if we want to stay competitive, and Honeywell is all about spreadsheets and margins and making money. And when the Northford site can't make as much money as another site can, they will move the factory, guaranteed. They've already done it in many other places, they're looking at what they call rooftop consolidation. So I work for Honeywell, but I'm also trying to, I say I'm the Test Engineering Manager, but my real job is to try to keep the factory in Connecticut, and that's what I do every day. How can we do it better, smarter, faster? So we need that talent, those are higher paid jobs, so we have to hire some people that will be making more money, but over time, because we'll leverage their expertise and we'll automate, we won't have to reduce headcount, we'll just do more business with the same amount of people we have today. But there's a slight increase in headcount on the talent side of the business. So that's basically what I'm here to express to you guys. I don't know how the town can make that happen, but we need to find talent, that's the number one thing when I interview. I look for behaviors, because that's, I believe, comes from God, you can't fix that, and then I look for talent. Experience and knowledge can be gained, but if we don't have talent, you're wasting your time. So we need to identify talent and then train that talent, and we'll be good. So if you have any questions?
No, I think this, Dean, I thank you for coming, and I think Roger can put some more detail to it, but what we have going here is an opportunity through conversations and dialogues to create a public-private partnership with the help of Honeywell and the other manufacturers that, in this town, that Roger's talking to, the ESIs and Penn Globe and other, to create what I call a pipeline, or try to create, and something that, you know, we invest in a study, that this is what this, you know, presentation is about, is about moving forward to build the blueprint, right? So we invest some money with the private partners and go after a blueprint that is the vehicle by which to get, as Roger mentioned, the EDA and other sources from federal and state. And that's, you know, obviously, we've been in discussions with Representative Candelaure, who's here as well tonight, who understands the gap and the need, because if it can be done here, and it can be replicated anywhere in Connecticut and anywhere in New England. So that's the, that's the opportunity, is to build the pipeline, and I think there's a lot of spillover, a domino effect in terms of what's happening if you build and create the talent pool, then it's not just...
It's much more effective to have it locally. Honeywell's reaching out to India, we hire a lot of guys out of school from India, they book a lot of hours. It looks like it's saving us money, but over time, it isn't, because all the projects they work on take two and three and four times longer than it would if we had engineers locally onsite, that could understand what they're designing for the customer. India doesn't even know who the customer is, so how can they design a product, you know? So it's very difficult. We're doing it because Honeywell has recognized that the average age of engineers in this country is getting older and older. So they want to stay in business, they need engineers, so they're looking wherever they can find them. And right now, it's India and China, and from what I hear, China's doing a better job of it than India is. But the one thing that makes us successful in Northford is that we have all the business functions in Northford. So we always have problems, there's problems every day. I come in every morning with a plan, and soon as I meet in contact with the plant, that plan goes in the dumper, and we gotta react to whatever's happening. But because we have marketing, sales, engineering, quality, design assurance, shipping, all in one location, we can recover from our problems much faster. Once Honeywell started moving stuff away, we build it here, we design it there, we do logistics in another location, as soon as you have a problem, you're down for a long, long time. And anytime you're down, you're losing money.
Now, where are you drawing your talent from, technical high schools, technical colleges?
Well, I, like I say, the talent is coming, well, isn't coming, but I've interviewed people from various places around the country, tried to bring them here, because most of the manufacturing businesses, especially electrical, left Connecticut a long time ago and took the talent with them. And so I've interviewed people from the University of Hartford, I've met with the University of New Haven, excuse me, I met with the dean there, and he was talking about how great their programs are and their engineers are, and after the first year, their freshman year in college, they're building robots, and I'm scratching my head, building robots? They can't possibly know where the diode is at freshman year. They, they're not building robots. They get a kit, and they follow some instructions, and wee, we got a robot. They have no idea how it works. And if you don't know how it works, you're never gonna remember it. So the principles that I, that I've built my whole career on, I mean, I'll take them to my grave, unless I get Alzheimer's disease, I'm gonna take them to my grave. So once you understand the concepts, you're golden. So that's always what I look for when I'm trying to hire somebody. And if they know an equation, that doesn't tell me anything, because I can show them a schematic, they don't know the equation, they can't solve anything. They can make a measurement, they won't know if it's good or bad, they have no idea. So that's what we need to try to do, is find talent and then preach and teach the fundamentals. Once they have that, sky's the limit. So I look for guys, they had no experience in fire panels, had no idea, they would never test engineers, but they understood the fundamentals of electronics. I hired them, and six months later, I got work, two years later, they're brilliant. So that's what needs to happen. I can't find those people, I just can't. People with master's degrees, I ask them simple, basic electronic questions, they cannot answer them. So I scratch my head, I'm like, how did they get through school? I don't know. So that's what we're up against. It's, like I said, there's no, there's, there's no easy way out, you just have to do the hard work.
Thank you.
I appreciate it very much. And then, of course, as you go further back to pipeline, in the tier one, like Honeywell, to the tier two and tier three, it's even worse, because they don't have the resources of Honeywell to do some internal training. And so, in fact, some of the companies, including Pratt &amp; Whitney, are actually taking from their vendors the skills that they need. And so the vendors, as you go down the line to people like ESI here in town, are struggling even more to try to find the expertise they need to run their automated manufacturing. I'd like to just invite, being involved with our discussion, just to say a few words, if I could.
Thank you. Good evening. Just to add, I guess, what's intriguing about this discussion that's different from the state is, we, we at the state level, I think, catered to certain industries. So you'll hear about the Pratt &amp; Whitney's, the UTC's. Right now, we're working on blockchain and artificial intelligence, which is being promoted, the West Hartford sale of Yukon is sort of part of that industry. And so what ends up getting lost, getting lost, I think, what Roger has pointed out, are sort of these, the middle tier companies, the, you know, third tiers, I guess you would call them, that don't necessarily, we don't necessarily tap into our student population to train individuals for this. And so one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, similar to what Goodwin College has done with bringing, you know, a portable bus into companies to train individuals for certain positions for smaller companies, you know, that's a concept, a model, that I think maybe we could start looking at. And one of the things I offer is looking also at Wallingford, who has started this STEM program in the schools, they've created an educational hub where they've actually They've created an educational hub where they've actually connected directly with the businesses and to try to bridge the two. Because on the education level, we're now implementing Capstone, which is requiring students to do internships with different schools before they graduate. And I know North Branford's well on the way they've implemented that as well. That these are all opportunities, I think, for us to connect these students with our job market. And so I just lend that, you know, offering. I think it's different from what we're doing at Hartford, because Hartford seems to go for the, you know, the multi-million dollar, billion-dollar companies as opposed to, you know, some of these are smaller towns that have a lot of industry in it and manufacturing in it get lost.
I'm honestly happy to tell you, any questions on the package that we sent out? It's in a very early stage. Michael mentioned we're looking at a private-public partnership to do this and setting up some kind of leadership committee, which would hopefully involve some of our leading manufacturers here in this community. Mike, we might want to mention we met with Scott today to talk about how the...
Right. Yeah, a very positive meeting with Scott as well, understanding that the pipeline has to, you know, we're talking about young adults, maybe even postgraduate, but Scott was very open to that and very positive meeting. And we're gonna continue the dialogue to see where the maximum impact could be there. But again, this is putting together this blueprint or, you know, looking for additional partners in the private sector. So it's a work in progress. We're gonna, you know, keep having those meetings and beginning to put the concept together. But ultimately, you know, we'll gather a pot of funding to seed this blueprint, to get it done, and then use that as a springboard, as a vehicle to get, you know, funding for an actual training academy, whatever you want to call it, to open and develop a pipeline of young adults that can be feeding the, not only just the Skorskis and our local companies, but, you know, even you pick up the paper about Electric Boat, they're not gonna make it with looking at trying to fill thirteen thousand jobs by twenty twenty-three. Where do they think they're coming from? I mean, we've got, everyone in this state has to jump in on this problem. But I think, you know, with Roger's expertise and contacts and, you know, our continued dialogue, I think we've got enough partners that we can bring together to get this done.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you. Next item, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Just a minor point, if I may. I noticed a week or so ago, came out of the coffee shop up in Northford, that the lights at Northford Park were on at eight o'clock in the morning. I checked again today and they're on. So I'm not sure what the issue is, whether it's a photocell, whether it's on a timer, but we're lighting up the morning skies for some crazy reason.
I'll check into that.
The next item is resignations appointments. Resignation of Tony Catapano from Police Commission. Next item is appointment of David Plumbo to the Police Commission. I don't have a term that expires, I think it's December...
I think it's December thirty-one.
Of this year, two thousand eighteen.
Oh, thirty-one eighteen. Somebody wanna make that motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor De Laun.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
All right, move into...
Welcome back.
Move into unfinished business discussion in action. Approval of proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash one, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department. Those tables until July. Does anybody have any, Anthony?
No, I don't.
Does anybody have any feeling on this?
That's what I was gonna ask the first question. Before we go, a lot of, at time and effort, I know there was a split on the council if there was something you wanted to proceed with or not, before we get, you know, too deep in it, if it's gonna be a waste of time, tell me now.
I have just one quick little question.
Sure.
Is this any different from any other town? Do most towns have these fees?
Some do, some don't.
Yes. A lot of towns do.
Are these approximate, well, I guess it depends on the size of the town.
Yeah, I have some information I didn't bring with me tonight comparing other towns. We simplified this. What's in yellow is the last gyration of it and we kind of simplified it. A lot of towns have it broken down, so much of a fee for inspection, so much of a fee for fire alarm inspection and so on and so forth, plan review. And we kind of simplified it to one flat fee of eight dollars per thousand of value to encompass everything. I know our neighbors to the west, North Haven, are making a boatload of money with the Amazon building as part of that. And as Al had mentioned, in a lot of towns he does work in, this is common. But I know there was some, there wasn't a big appetite on the council for it, so I guess the mayor's question, I guess, is the first hurdle. Is there an appetite for it now or are we just gonna put it to bed and don't worry about it?
Anthony, are these increases, is that what I saw?
It's brand new.
Yes, brand new.
Brand new. We currently do not charge for any of these items. And a lot of fire marshals do charge. And it's just, it's, you know, revenue that we're passing up, general fund revenue.
Did the council ask for this?
This started probably about ten-plus years ago when a manager at the time, when we were in budget meetings, asked if there's a way to generate more revenue. And we looked at the fire rescue billing as one alternative, that kind of died off. Second one is fire marshal fees that would go to the general fund, like building permit fees, things like that. A lot of towns do it, we don't do it. Would it be the end of the world if we didn't do it? No. It's just an opportunity to capture some additional general fund revenue. If the council has no appetite for it, I'll sit down and shut up.
The only concern I had when this came out was us trying to, you know, get the EDC moving ahead and gaining business. Is this a nuisance to that?
Correct.
And I'm, I don't have...
It's a valid point.
I was just bringing that up as a point, that's all.
It's a very valid point. That was, it was funny, one of the managers that asked for it, a subsequent manager said the same thing. You're trying to encourage business, why would you put more fees on them? So it's, it's a, you know, it's a Chevy versus Ford thing, do you like it or you don't, you know?
The only problem is we don't have that much business knocking on the door.
Yes.
Special effects.
Yes.
So the FMO may require hiring fire personnel.
Yes.
That would be charged to whoever was doing the fireworks or...
Right. In the past, you've had residents who have come before him for significant fireworks displays. And we had assigned people there would brush trucks in case embers went crazy, things like that. And if in the fire marshal's opinion, this private display warranted it, they would have to hire fire personnel to be on fire watch kind of thing.
It's fairly obvious that there's an expense associated with these services. We've got personnel, we've got equipment, we're going to have to do man-hours to provide the service. So either it's gonna come out of general taxation, which means everybody's paying for it, or the person who benefits directly or is directly responsible for the town and curbing the cost is being asked to pick up some or all of the expense. I think that's the most appropriate way to do it.
It's a user fee, you're a hundred percent right. I know there was some difference of opinions last time.
I don't want to discourage business, but the expense ought to be collected from the source, that's causing it. If there's any way to do that. At least that's my feeling.
And we can modify this list further, you know, if you want to go through and just leave the first section that was highlighted as far as the building plan reviews and you want to modify or reduce or revise the balance of it. I mean, we're open to any suggestion. Again, this was basically mirrored after a couple of different towns that we had gotten information from, what they charge and so on, and we just kind of, kind of, you know, put it together based on that. The last highlight, if you look on page forty-three of your tablet, there was one of the provisions that had some concern from the council last time was a cap. They put a cap of a hundred dollars per year for an occupancy for fee. So whether they have like a liquor permit or a daycare permit or any kind of establishment along that line, no more than a hundred dollars per year. And that second line above that, the frequency of inspections are governed by state statute. That was how many, how often you have to inspect a daycare or a liquor permit or other places of assembly, things like that.
Now, all these are new, inspection of merchandise or business establishments, twenty-five dollars. Inspection of industrial establishments, fifty dollars. Inspection of storage, those are all new.
Correct. Every, this whole thing is brand new. There's nothing currently being charged by the fire marshal's office at all. And again, if you wanted to simplify it and stick with the plan review as a way to get our feet wet into it and not nickel and dime people, I mean, obviously, it's a cost of doing business. You know, a person comes in with a big wide-scale plan, there's a lot of time and effort involved by the fire marshal's office to building, you know, permits, fire alarms, sprinklers, the whole nine yards. So, you know, if you want to start out, we can modify this even further and just, you know, stop it at the end of forty-nine B. And just do plan reviews as our way to get our feet wet. And then, you know, the rest, we can, you know, put on hold for the time being and see how it works out.
That's a good idea. Somebody want to make a motion to...
So before we go forward with that, and I do think that's a good idea, do they, how'd you come up with the eight dollars per thousand dollar value? Because that, that's gonna add up pretty quick on a big commercial building.
I mirrored that one, I believe, off of North Haven. I got that number right from North Haven.
Want to go lessen that out?
Well, I was thinking, I was trying to, I was trying to think, okay, you know, it's not hard for a commercial building to be up to three hundred thousand, you know? It'd be a lot of hours of plan review for, at eight dollars, a thousand.
Go five? Give me a number. I'm easy.
I don't know what to tell you. I will tell you this, in Carystown, I paid thirty-eight thousand dollars for my last building permit for a house. And the way they get around it, because the town can only charge what it costs to implement it, they're covering all this stuff in that fee.
Flat fee. That's another option too. If you want, if you want, we can modify the building permit fees to incorporate it there. That's another way to get it.
Well, not everybody needs fire marshal review. So I think I'm, I think this is a good way to get some, get some money. And I think anybody doing a project, and I'll tell you, I mean, like just on the one I'm doing with the, you know, what I paid the guy to design the sprinklers, it kind of seems unfair that Bert has to review that for nothing. You know? I mean, you know, it just doesn't, if you're doing a project, there's cost to it.
Well, if you're paying thirty-eight thousand dollars for a house permit, somebody building a commercial building, I mean, really, they shouldn't be expecting to do that.
For nothing.
And get the town to basically subsidize their project.
Right. So I mean, I don't know, you know, what's...
I can double-check North Haven and surrounding towns if those are...
Check that and see if that's what it is.
A flat permit. So you basically, you want to stop it at forty-nine B, building plan reviews and the rest, what kind of...
The other fees cap out at a hundred dollars.
Correct.
I mean, really, they cap out.
Oh, I think the hundred dollars is on the inspection fee, correct? On that one section.
On that section.
On the occupancy, forty-nine P.
See, and he's saying stop at forty-nine B, right?
Right. So the cap out of a hundred is...
We're just getting our feet wet. We're just gonna try.
Get our feet wet. So I'll research, I'll come back with other towns as far as their flat rate. I'll confirm what North Haven's rate is.
Like Al said, stay away from Carystown, we can't afford that.
All right. Thank you.
And the other thing is forty-ten here, the key lock boxes?
Yeah, that's already been approved.
That's what I thought, that shouldn't be in here, okay.
Ignore that, that shouldn't have came with that.
Okay, so we're only in forty-nine.
General purpose on the lock boxes?
Yes.
You've got some duplication of...
Yeah, I don't think, this isn't what the final version was. I think the final version got cleaned up before this, that got approved.
We approved that already.
Yeah, that was approved previously.
And it is something, you know, getting permits in different, towns are all over the place on what they charge for permits.
Some towns probably haven't reviewed theirs in years.
Yeah, I mean, some towns, it's like you get the permit and you're like, wow, they haven't looked at this. And then you get Carystown. So this is gonna come back?
Yes. I'll prefer the towns that have the flat rate per value and then I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Thank you. Future budget planning initiative.
Nothing to report.
Presentation by Silver Petroselli and Associates on Police Department renovation.
Yes, and we're gonna need the projector...
Thank you. I'm John Ireland, I'm an architect with Silver Petroselli. I think we were here probably about six months ago, Bill Silver and I. So I'm with Silver Petroselli. We've been working with the chief and the department heads as well as the police commission in putting together a study which more or less picked up from the two thousand and sixteen DTC study. As you know, they did a facility study. We then took that facility study, did our own facility study, and then developed a program for the police department. Tonight, we're gonna look at four different design options. The first three are additions to the existing building. The existing building is on two floors, all of you I think know it fairly well. Some of you, I think, have been into the ground floor, but each of the two floors is about three thousand one hundred square feet and then one stacked on top of the other. You enter the building on the second floor, can be known as the ground floor, but it's the second floor. And then, most of the actual police operations are on the lower level, also at grade, which opens out at grade. So we'll look at three ways of expanding that. The first one is limited. It is about two thousand square foot addition. And I think that's the one that, as we talked about six months ago, what's the most cost-effective? What's the minimum amount we need to do? And you'll see that in that first option. The second option then expands on that and in fact, configures two drive-through Sally ports and builds on top of that. And then the third option is to maximize an addition to that building. Then the fourth option that we've looked at is a brand-new facility. And while that may sound fairly radical, I think let's take a look at where that leads us to and some of the challenges with this existing building. Again, those that have been in the building, that ground floor is a challenge to say the least. It was originally about, what, forty-five, almost coming on fifty years ago when it was originally built. At the time, cells were in fact donated from West Haven. Those are abandoned in place down there, they're not usable today, they don't meet safety, they don't meet the needs of detention. And new cells were configured about twenty years ago. Our firm, in fact, designed that addition to the facility twenty years ago. So it has been added on to, and then since then, certainly since it was originally built and even twenty years ago, technology, as we all know, has changed things quite dramatically and will continue to change things quite dramatically with the storage of evidence, whether it's car cameras or body cameras. So I think those are important points to remember as we start to look at this existing building and how can we improve it? How can we expand it and how can we add on to it? Dispatch emergency services is another critical function, obviously cannot be interrupted. The nine-one-one services must be in operation at all time. And again, if you take a look at those today, they are in working order, but it's not gonna take much to take them out of working order. In other words, quite literally, someone could cut the wrong wire during a renovation and that would put everything out of operation. So we've concluded that we don't recommend occupied construction. In other words, there is no way to work around folks, certainly the department, but no way to work around police services, no way to keep people detained in the current police department and build it in place. Again, small spaces, very compact, very well-built out. So we've carried in first three schemes, the option of temporary facilities. We've set twelve months. Again, that is a timeframe that seems reasonable. Again, that is a timeframe that seems reasonable to construct and renovate the building. And we carried that across the board. I think to cover probably all bases, we carried seventy-five thousand dollars a month for twelve months, which equates to almost a million dollars. We can debate that, but it's, it's carried across each of those schemes equally. So, I wanted to, uh, to alert you to that. And then, I think the other thing that we, um, we do recommend is it might be time, again, you will, you will decide, of course, but it might be time to hire a construction manager who is much better suited than architects and engineers at talking about both our opinion of not building in an occupied building and also timing and costs. We feel fairly confident about the numbers we have all across the board, from the programming to the cost. But again, a construction manager, that is their job all day long. And I think the last note is, uh, North Haven. I know it, it was mentioned as, as a benchmark, certainly for perhaps Fire Marshal fees, but recently went through this very exercise of, can we add on to the police department? Can we do it in occupied construction? Downs Construction was hired. We've had conversation with Downs Construction about how did that come about? And certainly, they were instrumental. But the town was as well to say, we don't want to take the risk of both keeping our dispatch in operation in occupied construction and detaining anybody in a temporary facility. So, they elected to move out and turn over the building to renovation. I think they bid the packages out, uh, at the beginning of the year. So, again, I mentioned that. It's, it's worth, for those that would, would like to, certainly, it's worth taking a look at that. So, with that, I think I've, I've summarized this. We've been through the building. We've been through the site. Criscolo Engineering joins us, uh, in this study. They do a fabulous job. As you know, they're local. They have done all the civil work, looked at the site, looked at the septic. It's a challenging site and, again, one single point of entry. Certainly, the proposal is we'll start to look at opening that up. I think the surprising thing about this building is from Forest Road, it looks like it's in great shape. And then, the facade certainly is. I think as you get inside and look at the details of the building, you'll see a very different, um, image than you do from the outside of the building. It's also really not that possible to rebuild the septic system in place while you're occupying it. And the, the, uh, the ground is good. The ground perks well. So, Criscolo has, uh, you'll see it in their drawings, proposed to, uh, rebuild the systems out there. There's a, a continuing problem. Uh, we don't know exactly what that problem is right now, but there's a continuing problem with the septic system. We believe it might well be the old original lines that were tied into may be, um, disconnecting, sloped, fallen, who knows? But, um, it's not a tank problem. It's not a twenty-year-old problem. It may be an older problem. And it's probably, we're guessing, under the building. So, again, don't want to go too far into all the details tonight. So, here is the first, uh, option and the first site plan. And just to give you the highlights, um, we would expand. So, the, the yellow is the existing station. Here is the, uh, here's the addition. And this is a drive-through Sallyport. It's the safest way. Most police, uh, vehicle accidents are done in backing. I kid you not. And it's just one of those things, you know, a lot going on. So, drive-through Sallyport's certainly the safest way to go about that. Then, it expands and, and more than doubles the parking. I mean, it's severely underparked right now. Expanding the lot, uh, here on Forest Road for, um, for visitor parking and for additional vehicle parking. So, that's a quick overview. And I'm gonna go quickly through these. We can certainly go back. I know it's, uh, bound to be a long evening, but, um, I'll go quickly through everything and try not to repeat too much. So, here is the proposed floor plan. We tried to make clear the line here is the addition. So, this is the existing building. We'll look at that in a minute. Each proposal then proposes to add a stair and a reasonably large stair so that you could, um, you could have two individuals, even someone being detained in that stair and then an elevator. So, that's the elevator here, the stair. This is a single Sallyport, again, the minimum. Really, the request is to have two drive-through Sallyports and you'll see that in the next scheme. This anticipates leaving, uh, the existing mechanical room in place here, leaving the IT and trying to expand it slightly here, and then configuring a minimal-type locker. And I say that because, um, the duty lockers would be stacked. The ideal situation is a duty locker that is vertical, that can vent through. In this case, to get the numbers in, and it's approximately twenty-four. And right now, it's three in the female locker room, twenty-four in the male locker room. They would have to be stacked. So, space is, uh, premium down there. We chose to enclose what is the kitchen, the day room, um, combination reporting room. Evidence then gotta get squared up and then rebuild detention here with prisoner, uh, booking there. So, that's the quick look. Each one of these, I tried and I apologize, it's a little bit faint, but that's the existing floor plan superimposed over that. Moving up to the second floor, in this first option, it's very limited. The only thing we are proposing is to then connect the stair and the elevator right there in the admin area and then to expand the IT. That's a secondary IT up here. You know, dispatch is here. And then, the entire floor plan remains the same on the first floor and that's the roof below. Again, I want-
Flat roof?
Uh, flap, uh, no, no, peak roof. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, everything is a peak roof. Heard you loud and clear. Um, and you'll see that, quick sketches of the, of the elevation, but peak roof below. I just didn't, we didn't configure it here and show, show the peak there. So, here are the costs. And again, I'll spend a little more time on the first one. Consistently renovations is shown at, uh, three seventy-five, two seven, I'm sorry, two seventy-five on the, can't even read my own numbers, but back here, two seventy-five on the renovation and three seventy-five on the additions. Take the square footage and then bring it on over here. This option does not have a storage garage. Again, the request is, uh, in fatalities, the vehicle must be stored as evidence. A garage is a better option than leaving it out in the yard. So, that request was made. But in this first option, uh, again, minimal, you don't have to build it. It is not in that one. FFNE furnitures and fixtures and equipment, working our way on down. IT, a fairly minimal approach to IT. We are carrying the generator. I know that's on the agenda later. And, uh, we've been talking to, to the town manager there about that, or at least throwing out some ideas on sizes. So, all of that totals in brick and, bricks and mortar, two-point-two million. We then have soft costs. This is just a fairly average, uh, fee of seven percent. Environmental testing, hazmat, uh, you know, miscellaneous, uh, there, those fees. And then, finally, a design contingency. And, and it's often asked, well, what, what does that mean? That means that this preliminary stage of schematic design, there's a lot that can change. And so, generally, ten percent is recommended there for, uh, design contingency. And then, here's the number I talked about before. An allowance of seventy-five thousand dollars a month across twelve months for temporary facilities. Again, don't know exactly what those would look like at this stage. Generally, as North Haven is doing, detention then is in a, in an adjacent town with, you know, some kind of reciprocal agreement with the town to say, hey, if you ever need additional cell space, we have it. So, all of that, uh, before that totals that two-point-five, and then that totals, obviously, three-point-five. But I think one of the also suggestions here from the town is, what could we do and can we improve this facility enough at two-point-five? So, again, I'll leave that decision up to you, but that was the approach here on this, uh, option one. Again, uh, back to the mayor's point, uh, no flat roofs. Again, everything's peaked. Everything is, uh, peaked back. This side view shows the drive-through Sallyport, uh, from, from the north, looking at the north elevation. Here's the back elevation. Here's the drive-through Sallyport. Stair is here, elevator here, and entry here, and these are egress doors. So, with that, I'll move on to option two. Again, very similar on the site plan. Criscolo has configured, uh, very similar here. Now, you're starting to see the addition projects a little bit further out and you're seeing a garage here and, um, a canopy covering there. That, that is flat though, right now, the canopy cover. And I'll sho, I'll show you that. So, here's that, that floor plan. Again, drive, double Sallyport, drive-through. There is space, you know, if the vehicle from behind could pass the other vehicle. And again, final design, look at configuring that. Everything from the K-nine, who currently doesn't really have a facility at the current department, stays in the car. But K-nine, uh, and, uh, vehicle, uh, quite a bit can happen in the Sallyport. Again, prisoner processing here, detention. Here is that evidence storage. It's a simple garage, um, is not conditioned. So, it's priced or estimated to be unconditioned. You know, it'll get hot, it'll get cold, but it will keep the, uh, the vehicle, uh, out of the elements and also out of sight. Sometimes that comes up, that it's better to keep, uh, those vehicles out of sight. Now, uh, evidence storage becomes a little bit bigger, a little bit more robust. Mechanical expands and now men's locker room. And here's the full height, um, duty lockers and women's locker room here. Now, we're to the program size, the estimated program size of about twenty-four and six here, looking at growth in the, in the, uh, in the officers. Again, I won't try to go through the existing plan. And on the second floor, uh, we leave dispatch in the same location, uh, leave the boardroom here. And most of the work then happens in this addition here. Moving now, the day and reporting room up, detectives, investigative unit here, uh, chief and lieutenant. And then, minor rebuilding here, accessibility of the toilet rooms and, uh, an expansion of that IT. So, we've moved it out of the ground floor. As you recall, it was on the ground floor. Moved it up to the secondary IT and built data here, which is a lot more, uh, functional and a lot easier to bring everything up to current. So, that, again, sloped roofs, addition, looking at the back. Here is that primary addition. The double drive-through Sallyport is here. And this is the simplified garage there on the end. So, the cost here now is starting to climb because, again, more renovations, the entire ground floor, more additions, um, to the tune of about five thousand, roughly about five thousand if you include the garage. And then, that cost, three-point-eight in construction cost, bringing down roughly the same numbers. Obviously, the, the contingency, um, is ten percent of that. Three-point-eight. And then, that project total with the same temporary facility is the five-point-three. So, the third option then looks at maximizing the addition. So, instead of a, uh, covered parking here, this is all building, same, uh, here. Site very similar, expands, uh, you know, and gives you two ways out, as the other schemes did. Expand septic in place. Ground floor looks slightly different. Mechanical room gets rebuilt. Fitness room, day room, very similar locker rooms, evidence, very similar. And again, now prisoner processing is a much smoother, much easier layout. The exact number of cells and the exact layout, whether it's male, female, juvenile, and then how many, um, total, uh, has to be finalized, uh, Sallyport and then evidence there. There, the stair is centered on, centered on the plan. Stair and elevator are centered here. Now, this upper level is completely renovated. We've actually flipped and put dispatch here, put the public waiting area here so that this can function at night. If I'm coming from the public, someone there in dispatch can greet me. This door, obviously, can be left locked. Reconfigure the, the boardroom, which is also used as a, uh, commission room, which also uses a training room. Interview rooms, smaller conference room, uh, record storage. Now, the, the reporting room, uh, with the sergeants and investigative here, uh, chief and lieutenant, and then admin area roughly across here. So, that also looks very similar. I think the biggest difference is try to maximize floor. We pushed this second floor out over the first floor. Drive-through Sallyport's about the same. Roof lines line up probably, I guess, a little better. And the, uh, storage here, uh, on that elevation. So, that cost is now climbing, again, much larger addition, complete renovation, complete overhaul. Some of the numbers have gone up a little bit, whether it's, uh, FFNE or IT. And five-point-one and six-point, is that an eight or a nine?
Nine.
Nine, thank you. I should probably put my glasses on. So, uh, the, the final scheme, the fourth option then is to build new. And so, uh, with Criscolo and Jim Preddy, we said, you know, there are a lot, there are quite a few locations on this site, um, in your current site. But we said, I think the simplest thing is to look at right behind. The, the grade has started, has been leveled out. Yes, it is a parking area associated with the field. But again, it's nice level ground. It perks the same. It made sense right now to look at that configuration and to show a simple, you'll see a one-story building here. I think one of the things and one of the exercises that we go through is, is it more cost-effective to build a one-story building with a large perimeter of foundation? Or is it better to go up and bear the cost of, and I'm gonna use the number, one hundred thousand dollars for an elevator? That's the cost of the elevator, the shaft, everything else associated with additional electric. And, you know, how does that look? So, that is another option, by the way. And again, um, the department is saying, hey, you know, is that the final plan? No, this is a idealized layout. So, the idea here is that this could be built, um, to an ideal plan. You'll see numbers and you'll see the summary of the numbers, uh, next. And, again, public here, dispatch is configured here, uh, admin and training and, uh, you know, police commission here, uh, investigative here, chief lieutenant. And then, roughly from here back is police services. Evidence and detention here, drive-through Sallyport there. Again, first pass at a schematic plan, configuring everything on one floor. Again, peak roofs, uh, could be a simple wood truss. Duct work could be configured here. This anticipates, uh, no mechanical room inside. In other words, it would be, uh, furnaces, uh, in, in the attic space and then ground-based, uh, fan units. Again, taking a look at the site and how that would work. So, these costs look, uh, slightly different. We have lowered the cost, um, for, um, construction because, again, it's easier to construct, um, new than it is to construct an addition. And the challenges are coming up to an existing foundation, existing walls. It's down by twenty-five dollars a square foot. Some of the other numbers have gone up. And then, I think the biggest difference is there's no allowance for temporary facilities. There's, this building could be built, could be tested, could be made ready for occupancy and then literally moved over within, you know, a day or two and occupied. So, that would eliminate, eliminate that cost. So, here's that comparison chart. And, again, I won't try to go through every number. But the bigger, biggest differences in all of them are roughly in the police service area. In other words, what is service division? You can see some numbers going up and down there, kind of an idealized here or programmed. And again, the concept is that this program would directly translate into, into new. So, in comparing option one, two, and three, the limited, the partial, and the maximum addition, you'll start to see some numbers that line up and some, uh, like that one, which is, you know, roughly, um, a little bit more than a third, less than the idealized. I also then brought the cost down so we can start to see the differences in both square footage and the ideal. There's about a two thousand square foot addition at the three-point-five million. Again, that includes the temporary facilities. About a five thousand square foot addition at five-point-three. About an eight thousand square foot addition at six-point-nine. And then, the five-point-eight, which doesn't include, does not include the temporary facilities at the thirteen thousand seven hundred square feet. So, that is our recommendation, is to build new. It's based on, um, you have the land, uh, which is available. Certainly need to look at that site, look at the locations, parking needs and public works needs out there. The new facility allows for no interruptions to police services and, um, while they remain in their current location. Again, building can be built, fully tested, fully operational before anybody moves in. We know how hard it is to, to renovate and to, uh, to both test, commission, and get things up and running. Think it will create a greater benefit to the police services in the long run. Again, trying to fix that building, um, there are certainly some challenges. And we are suggesting, I'm not saying they're unfixable, but there's some challenges there that that building will always have. One of which is the leaky foundation up against the, uh, the sloped, uh, sloped wall. And whether that can be fixed, is fixed. There are things like that that, uh, will certainly always be there. So, with that, I know I've, I've talked, uh, quite a bit and I will open it up from there. I can certainly go back. You have this. I did leave it on your laptop, so thank you. Any questions?
I just had one minor question. On options one and two, were you moving the current entrance to the?
No.
You're gonna keep that?
It remains, right. Only, you're right, Mike, only in option three do we propose to move the entrance over to the, to the new dispatch in option three. Otherwise, it remains the same and dispatch remains the same.
I have a couple of questions. In general, why, why are you recommending two Sallyports?
I think operationally, they feel that, again, if one is occupied, one is out, one is being used, it does create a second Sallyport.
I hear that, but I mean, there's all kinds of police departments of much greater size that don't have two Sallyports. And I'm trying to figure out what, you know, is there a redundancy here or are we creating another garage, another storage area? You know, what the purpose is of that?
No, I think the servicing of vehicles as well. I think equipping servicing vehicles, if one's in, the other one can use the other one. The storage intended to be that simple garage, unconditioned garage.
So we're building a Sallyport as a, as a storage garage?
No, there's a secondary storage garage outside that is not conditioned. That was that five hundred, about a fifty-six thousand dollar addition to store evidence in a garage. These are functioning Sallyports, fully equipped. One would be outfitted for the canine, the other would be outfitted for any of the vehicles, as well as light servicing the vehicles and equipping of the vehicles, whether it's laptop change out or arming. So, again, if one of them is occupied, it gives you a second one. With one Sallyport, the current Sallyport is probably not even functioning.
I understand that.
Right.
I'm just asking why we're building two.
Again, the twenty-year outlook is how many vehicles, and we'll pin those numbers down, how many vehicles, you know, in the fleet.
And it appears from your plans that you're building, you're building and designing for a force of between thirty and thirty-five people?
The projected growth is about five, no, I don't think it's quite that high.
Looked like it from what I could see on your.
We'll get those numbers, but about thirty, I mean, that would be the high point, right, about thirty, right. Looked like a little bit more than that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is selection of commercial solar works as consultant for solar project.
Yeah, there's a memo in your packet that Carrie and I have been doing some research, continue to do. There's no recommendation at this point, other than I would like to pursue the fact that the regional water authority, we've talked to, is doing the project with property next, next door to us. Because of the Z-Rex, we bought ourselves a little time, the Z-Rex applications are expected, or the auction isn't expected to go off until August. And in the review with the Commissioner Solar Works, as I say in the memo, that project and Montville is awarded but not, not built. So there's no, there's no track record or anything to, to visit or site visit or check that out. Although they were pleased with the process, they liked the process, it's turnkey, you know, in a power purchase agreement. What we found in there is that, that's where the fees for, the company is buried and it turned out to be about ninety thousand, give or take, approximately ninety thousand, that was built into the, into the project. In talking with representatives over at Assante, at doing the project for the regional water authority, appeared that the fees would be much lower, potentially much lower, in that project and using Assante. So Carrie and I have been thinking about, obviously bouncing this off of Attorney Marino as well, who has a connection with, with the RWA. In that process that they've already gone through, that maybe we might be better served if we piggybacked off of RWA's project for a very narrow-focused project of the solar array on the ground behind NBIS and, and nothing more. Because that is pretty much similar to what the project Montville was doing. So, give or take, it's about a six hundred to eight hundred kilowatt type project. And I think it would be a good way for us to, to, to test the waters with, with solar and look at evaluating what Assante did with the RWA.
Where's Assante out of?
They're, they're Canadian, I believe, I'm not sure which, which town or city, but the Canadian. But I do, I, I, my, my sense is that, in, in the brief conversation I had with, with Attorney Marino, that RWA went through a rigorous, strenuous process for reviewing during their RFQ, RFP process. And I'd like to explore that to see if that would be more advantageous for us, rather than.
Do they, when did they award that to the RWA? Like two thousand seventeen?
I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the date on that, I, I get the sense it was.
I think it was March two thousand seventeen.
No, for Assante, do you know the date of, for RWA's award of that? I thought it was this year, I think it was this year?
I think it was two thousand seventeen.
Oh, was it seventeen?
So when's it starting?
As soon as possible.
So it'd be good to see that going before we jump in.
It's my understanding that because of the review process that RWA has with not only their own boards, but Public Health, Department of Public Health, it's just taking a long time. And it's just kind of their process. So I believe it was awarded last year and they're just trying to get it going. And luckily, they've been able to extend the Z-Rex a few times.
They doing ground mount?
Yes. And they, they couldn't tell us the price that they got from, with Assante for RWA, but it was about seven and a half, or less than seven and a half cents for the supply cost. Whereas with the Montville example, they were around seven nine. So, again, it depends on the size of the system.
If you Google it, the whole page is online, for RWA, for Assante.
Oh, Cambridge, Ontario is the location of Assante, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I think it makes sense, I mean, it will stay away from the roofs, stay away, you know, just look at a, a very targeted, specific area. Their ground mount, and NBIS is our largest consumer, and I think it makes sense to, to look at, you know, that specific type project to tie into NBIS to offset the costs there. It's just getting a feel for who we think would be the best outfit to work with. And I'm not sure that the commercial solar works is, is it or not. It's just, there's not a whole lot to, track record to, to look at, whether it's Assante or commercial or others. Look at others, but I'm not sure, aware of any other large ground mounts that have any kind of track record. They're all very, very new. And we're, we're asking and looking for that. So this is another alternative I'd like to explore and see, see what turns up with this.
So are you saying that you don't know of any other places that have used that company?
Well, no, no, Assante, but like, like Montville, like we were ready to, to travel to Montville and to see.
I know, there have to be other towns that have used some, either, either one of these companies. I, I think we asked last time to get some more information from different towns.
Terryville has a big solar facility that runs their high school.
So, I mean, I think we, I think we need to know the pros and the cons, and we haven't heard that. And I, I personally, I'm concerned about this until we get some more information.
You know what, I'm gonna make motion to table it.
I, I'll second that motion.
Somebody should take a ride to Terryville, or call Terryville, and find out what they did with their high school. Because they got a big solar field up there, big solar field.
What also you could do is call the people at Con Edison, NRG might do it too, the, you know, it says right here, under there, it says that Con Edison would be the contractor there, right?
Yep.
You must know, you must know somebody in Terryville, Carrie, right?
Right, they would know who's using it.
I think the, the commercial solar works, as Mike mentioned, what they were proposing is to work with the town for essentially no cost, so the town wouldn't pay anything upfront. But in talking with them, there would be a cost, we just wouldn't be paying it, the developer would. And it amounted to about ninety thousand dollars. The other option that we're looking at is trying to work with possibly Assante through RWA's procurement, if that's possible, which is where we were asking Attorney Marino, if that's possible to stay in compliance with procurement law. Again, you know, with Assante, they were able to get a better price for the RWA because there isn't that, that fee that's passed along to the developer. So there, there's definitely another way to go about it, which is just to go out to bid. But with the Z-Rex process, it just, it's a timing issue because the Z-Rex are available at some point in August, we're not sure of the date. And then we only have, I believe it's a two-week window to put the bid in and then hopefully be awarded the Z-Rex and then, you know, try and propose the project.
Well, I think a lot of members on this council are concerned, you know.
Sure.
And if we don't talk to somebody that has one working, guess what, the surprises gonna sit, sit, and sit.
Right, right. And it may be too rushed, so this may not be good timing, and that's fine as well.
Thank you.
Mike, you could reach out to someone like Con Ed, NRG, PG&E, all those power plant. Somebody has to, to know who, who, who the consultants are or whatever, how, how this actually works.
Right.
With the pros and the cons.
I know Terryville's had theirs up and running for a couple of years now.
Pardon?
Terryville's had theirs up and running for a few years now, so I mean, they have to have a feel for, they're running their high school out of it. So, and it's big and it's new.
Who's doing it, do you know?
Hired in my pay grade.
Then we should talk to that.
That's what I suggested. Um, okay.
So there's the motion.
Motion for.
To, to table it.
It was a motion to table it.
Anthony made it and Henry seconded it.
Roll call.
Mayor Dootie.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
And Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bidleone.
Yes.
Councilor Zanpano.
Yes.
Before, before we move off of solar, you know, we really should do something with our, our free five KW solar thing that we won by letting that group, yeah, use the town and, so here's my thoughts. I don't know where we would put a five KW in town, but maybe what we do is give it away with a raffle at the Potato Festival to, and whoever in town wins it, wins it and they can use it, you know? You know, these groups come into town, they pretend they're the Connecticut Solar Challenge when they're not. They, they offer this free thing, we win it, and then they don't, we're not gonna make them put it in?
I don't even know if it was five K.
I, I think it was five.
Yeah.
It, it was at.
So five KW, you know, people run a little bit of, you know, if the storm's out, you know, so five KW is, is worth doing.
It's only in North Branford.
That's right, it's only in North Branford.
Wallingford Electric does an honor, so.
But these, these, also, nobody in Northwood can play.
Where it checked, where it checked into Wallingford Electric, they do.
So unless, and I know I had mentioned once, that maybe the sign at the, maybe the sign at the, the electric sign at the school entrance, maybe it could run there, but we shouldn't just let it go.
Yeah, I think we can identify, I'll talk with Fran, I think we can identify maybe some, some of the different sites.
The Auger House? Oh, yeah, that's, no, I think that's still UI.
The police department lit sign in front of the building. As we move that.
All right, next is.
A town will take cash.
Next is discussion on RFP eleven, number eleven, two thousand seventeen eighteen, Police Department Emergency Operations Center Generator.
Right, so there were questions at the last meeting about the size and also John is, is here as, as well. This might be one of those issues that you, depending on where you go with the conversation on, on the PD, it's, you do it down the road. I think the issue was, there was funding from the, from the state to, to capture some of that funding, but that, that window is gonna, gonna close, and I'm not sure it makes sense for us to try to, try to do something now.
To rush it, right, for fourteen thousand dollars.
Rush it, but we don't, we don't know if we're staying or moving down the street or what we're doing.
We got a totally functional generator now.
Yeah.
I can't see wasting town money.
I mean, I'm not one, right, for, or, or.
On an undersized generator, that's not gonna run a brand new thirteen thousand.
But just as important, we had a conversation about whether this cost was correct. And that was something that was pushed back for procurement, where we were asked, we were asked that the bids didn't reflect what citizens came in and testified things were available for. I don't see where that's addressed in, in tonight's material at all, anyway.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, and again, that, those are, those are based on, on the bids that went out. I mean, I think John's got a, a size in his and a price tag of, give or take fifty-five thousand. That's what, that's what you get, I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it is what it is in terms of, of the bids and the specs, so maybe, maybe they're off.
I understand that. Information was offered that that, those bids were somewhat out of line.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, don't like leaving money on the table in terms of a, of a grant, but I think from what I hear, and I think it's, it'd be a move.
I, I think it's foolish.
Remove the table.
Well, are we gonna table or just?
I can't even see why you're, why are you gonna table it?
Don't do anything.
Right. No.
Just 'cause you have a coupon doesn't mean you need to buy anything.
All right, let's just remove it.
Okay.
Because it's already figured in the next police department addition or.
Right, that's good.
New building or whatever.
All right, next is review on possible action on Teamsters' health insurance plan for administrators.
The, as you know, the administrative group went into the Teamsters' plan as of July first. And the Teamsters' plan, historically, we've had a three-tiered approach to our medical insurance, a single, a two-person, and a family plan. And the Teamsters' plan is a one premium with no differentiation between single, two-person, and family. So what happens typically, if you're, if you're a single person, you're paying your percentage on, let's say, the low end historically. And if you're a married person, a family person, you're paying it on the high end, well, now it's all the middle of the road. So what I've attempted to do here is to create some kind of equalization to recognize that it's not fair to the single people to pay a premium share on a higher number than they would have paid historically. And conversely, the married people with family would be getting a big benefit by paying on a lower number. So the state plan that some of the unions are in keeps the three-tier system, the single, two-person, and family. My proposal is to use that as the basis to determine the, the percentage to modify the Teamsters' plan so we're having an apples-to-apples number. So in, in the eighteen nineteen plan, the numbers that are in front of you, the single is, in, in the state plan is nine oh six, the two-person is nineteen thirty-one, and the family is twenty-four oh nine. So the single represents forty-six point nine four percent of the two-person, and the family represents a hundred and twenty-four point seven percent of the two-person. So if you use that same, those same percentages on the Teamsters' plan, the equivalent number on a Teamster's single would be eight twenty-nine twenty-six, and a single person then would pay their premium share based on that number. And a family person would pay based on a, on a number of twenty-two oh three, would pay their premium share based on that number. Just a way to kind of equalize it where it's a one, we've historically had the three levels and it makes it kind of fair to the, you know, all levels, whether you're a single, a two-person, or a family. By putting it as one level, the seventeen sixty-six number, it kind of skews it a little bit. So this is my attempt to equalize it so that you're not penalizing the single people and giving the family people a windfall. Kind of equalizing a little bit. And again, that percentage may change annually as the state plan rates change. That'll be the basis, the percentage every year on, on annual basis, how the interrelation between the, those three tiers work will then fall over to the Teamsters' plan. Everybody follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's kind of confusing, but you follow what I'm saying, okay.
But is this just for the administrators, it's not for the unionized?
But is this just for the administrators, it's not for the unionized?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Is there the unionized public works too?
Uh, they did not address that in their negotiations.
So what are the, what's the public works?
They are seventeen sixty-six across the board, whether you're single, two-person, or family.
Okay.
And that's, we've got a contract, so there's nothing we can do about that.
Right. This is just our attempt to equalize it on the administrators. So I think I'm gonna motion, the next page is a motion for it, just to agree to that concept basically, and again, it'll change annually as the state plans percentages may change, and then it will then flow over to the Teamster's plan.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council instructs the Treasurer Finance Director to employ an equalizing factor to the single-tier medical insurance premiums in the plan that the administrators will be covered by. The equalizing factor will use the State Partnership Plan two point O as the guideline to determine the ratios as detailed above and may change annually.
Second. Discussion.
I got a question. So Anthony, when the administrators, like, did the group vote on going this way and that was the rule that they voted on? So now are we gonna think that maybe, say, family people in there voted for it because they saw that windfall? But maybe they wouldn't have voted for it if they knew we were gonna do this to it?
Um, good question.
No.
I don't believe it's ever been discussed, quite honestly.
No.
It was more of.
I think it was implied, but it was.
It was implied because, again, the, we have four, uh, four single folks who, looking out for their interests, if you didn't do this change, they'd be paying on a much higher premium. It, the the two-person is about a wash, so the single person would get penalized, the two-person is a wash.
Yeah, but under Obamacare, they wanted to punish the young, healthy people, so this would be in keeping. No?
Well, I don't know about that.
I'm curious about the equalizer, like, if you can do that.
I mean, as long as, I mean, we don't have that many administrators, so, did you talk to them about it?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, again, the 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 concept makes sense.
They all like it? That I'm wasting our time?
All right, you got a motion, second. Any further discussions?
Well, this actually, Al, was brought up to when the subcommittee met with the administrators about the insurance piece of it. This was.
So they're not getting blindsided by it tonight?
No, no, they.
Cause Marie.
No, they were not blindsided.
No, they they.
Marie sat in on those.
Well, and Franny, Kurt, and Lisa met with the subcommittee and they were all fully aware of all of this. Um, on there, so.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
No.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Bidleone.
Doing some legal work, Marie.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
And next is re, draft language for roads, construction ordinance, chapter two oh one.
Yeah, on on this one, uh, okay, I think there's a ques, but I I think there's more work that needs in review that needs to be done along with a reformatting, so I think this.
So you're thinking of tableing this?
Yes.
So I I just have a question on it, cause I've been talking with Franny over the last couple of years. Does this, does this address existing sidewalks, or do we need to address that at a different? And so, so in a nutshell, some of the subdivisions that have sidewalks in them, when people, right now, we have no means to handle, when people put a pool in, an addition, or whatever, and they're contractors, and excavators, and bulldozers, and dump trucks, and cement trucks cross our sidewalks, they blow them all to hell, and it's up to the town to fix them. So, are we gonna address that in this document, or do we need to address that? Cause we do need to address this, if we can't do it in this, is this just for all new stuff?
This is primarily for for new stuff.
Okay.
I mean.
So then we do, we do need to address that, though.
Yeah, and and I can look at it and see if there's some verbiage we can add to it.
Cause I mean, I know, like, again, we're looking at other towns, if you're gonna go do something in Hampden and cross that sidewalk, it's like a four thousand dollar bond.
Right, the the problem.
And we need to make the individual doing the addition, the swimming pool, whatever, responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house.
Right.
And right now, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not.
We're not, it's, a lot of times, we're not even aware of it, they do the work, they drive over it, they break it.
And then they call us and complain that the sidewalks crack in front of their house, cause they're.
And then they call us and complain. What we have to really do, in terms of that, is tighten the procedure between the building official, who generally goes out there and sees the activity.
Okay, so, so, so we're gonna table this here, and what I'm talking about isn't in this?
Not in there, I can, I can take a look at it.
But we need to address it, so.
We need to put it in there.
We need to put it somewhere.
Either here or in building, when they have to get it.
Well, I think, we gotta put it in here and then let building know that he's, whatever we decide, if there's a bond, if there's whatever.
And then here, and then building advise people.
And, you know, replacing a chunk of sidewalk isn't, isn't cheap.
Right, I mean, yeah, cause you're right, we we've experienced where someone's actually caused the problem and then they call and complain.
And then they complain.
Right.
That that should be part of the building permit in its, in a way, and then also follow-up.
Yeah, but I think. The point is, right at the moment, he has no means to do it, neither do these guys.
Right, right.
So that's my point of the story.
Okay.
Ju- just one thing, um, this, the the change of the road order has started because the the police had the issue of of work being done in in the town right away. Primarily, a lot of times, the tree people worked, the people working on the lines, there, uh, where we wanted to get, they wanted to get verbiage in the, in the ordinance. I had drafted a revision to the road ordinance a while back, and kept getting, uh, pushed back, uh, when I tried to get it going forward. So I'm trying to take this opportunity to address this at the same time, I've got major changes in the road ordinance. And what I've, the accompanying document that goes with it is a road standards booklet, so it which would have all the details and everything. So I'll have to get that out to you as well, but we have to just internally look at a a few things, make sure they're all updated, correct, and then bring it back to the, um, council for review.
Great, thank you. Next, we're going to new business, discussion in action, discussion of organizational structure for a police chief.
Yeah, so, uh, you've asked for, um, you know, a discussion on that, and and I've talked to Attorney Moreno, and and there is chapter seventy-seven that addresses the police commission, which has oversight over over the chief. And so, um, there is, I would think, opportunity within that chapter to amend that chapter, to talk about language of where, you know, does the the chief answer to the town managers, he answers on on just budgetary issues or administrative issues, and for policy, he answers to the, uh, police commission. You know, the the organizational structures and, uh, chart is in there, you can, you can modify that. I I'm not sure exactly how, what we want to resolve here and and how how we get there, but it's, this chapter seventy-seven is one possible, uh, vehicle by which to amend that, and and obviously, you know, in in the process, the commission's gonna go in through with a contract, uh, maybe, maybe it's addressed through through the contract as well.
Right, and I I think you want to be careful, that you have a police commission, uh, they have statutory authority, uh, and you don't want to create conflicts in, uh, responsibilities. The, uh, police chief, uh, will continue to report to the new police commission as long as they have, there is a police commission. But the, as a department head, he should also be reporting to the town manager with respect to budgetary issues because he's a department head. So I think the chief wears multiple hats, uh, within the, uh, within the town, one as a department head and one as the day-to-day manager of the police department. So it really depends on the issues that you want to address, uh, going forward with respect to reporting. But I think, um, un- under the ordinance, under the statute, uh, is the police commission has the responsibility for the oversight of the day-to-day management of the police department, which would include the oversight over the police chief. But I do think that it's important going forward that there's, uh, dialogue between the police chief and the town manager, particularly when it comes to matters of budget concern.
I have a concern about that because we're gonna go in executive session later over something that happened and nobody had control over anybody.
I understand that, and we can discuss that.
So, I mean, somebody has to have some authority on their day-to-day operations versus once a month.
The police, uh, commission has that responsibility and authority by statute.
Was never exercised.
That's a different issue.
That's the problem you get.
But as an administrator, not as a police chief, shouldn't he answer to the town manager?
In my opinion, yes. As an administrator, he's a department head, and he's responsible for the presentation of a, of a budget for his department, which requires interaction and interface with the town manager, because the town manager has to deal with the budget at large.
Are you limiting that to just the budget, or say that Franny is yelling at people that are calling up because he snowplowed their mailboxes up? And so then, wouldn't that be up to the town manager to address his contact, contact on how he's dealing with the public?
I would say yes.
So would that follow into the police chief?
Uh, well, again, there, I would say that the police commission, who has the authority to hire and fire and hold the, uh, position accountable, should going forward develop practices to, you know, the, the police chief is in a different role than, uh, than Fran would be in that he has a, there, there he or she has a commission.
Another lord, a commission.
That oversees that department by statute and by ordinance. Even if you took out, took away the ordinance, you still have the statute. So unless you get rid of your police commission, cause there's no obligation to have a police commission, you can have that authority in lieu of the police commission, but as long as you have a police commission in place, the responsibility for that day-to-day personnel oversight, I think rests with you.
Well, this has upset a few commissioners, but for forty-plus years, we we haven't had a police commission before, maybe this year, where they stood up to anybody. So are we gonna get that again?
We can only move forward.
Without, without, without a town manager having some authority over, some administrative authority over the police chief?
I I would say that the responsibility lies with this body for purposes of oversight over that body. So if the town council feels that the police commission is not doing its function, then you have the authority under your charter to call the police commission before yourself and call them out on what they're failing to do. You have the appointment authority, you can replace the police commissioners if you feel they're being ineffective. Uh, and, uh, and, you know, I mean, you are the appoint, uh, appointing authority of them. So, you know, forty years, I, again, history, are you appointing the same people? You, you know, that, you can't, we can't fix.
It was a good old boy club that never took any action.
Well, whose fault is that? You know, and we can only move, move forward, we can't fix history. So you can put in, uh, protocols, but the protocols are only gonna be as good as the, uh, the employment of those protocols. And ultimately, this body, or a future body that sits in this place, has the ultimate authority under the charter to review whatever any other body, uh, potentially with the exception of the Board of Education, uh, is doing, uh, within their authority. So if, you know, what I would recommend going forward is that, uh, proper, uh, protocols are put in place by the police commission, which I've already started having conversations with commissioners to do. Your police, uh, next police chief have a written formal contract, which we've already discussed. That there be, uh, uh, procedures and and expectations built into that, uh, position. That there be annual reviews done of that position. Uh, and, uh, that, you know, if you wanted to develop a dialogue with the police commission and have them issue you, whether it be semi-annual or annual reports, you can, I think you can do that, you do have oversight over these bodies.
But what we don't have is a, uh, enforced communication between the department head and the town manager. And I think that's what the mayor was trying to, uh, address.
Right, but I think you do that, you, you have to do that through the budget process because that's your oversight with respect to the police department and the police commission at this point. I think that if you think.
Well, that way, you're punishing the officers instead of you punishing the chief.
Well, yeah, the chief position needs to be held accountable.
Because you, because, yeah, you cut the budget, you're hurting the officers that work under it, you're not hurting the chief.
Right, but I I I think you're assuming facts.
Unless the town council takes more action on the salary.
I think you're assuming facts based on historical data rather than.
That's what we got to go on.
Well, you you.
Unless you come up with something new.
It depends on who you hire and and how you hold that person accountable, and I think we've learned.
Well, yeah.
From past practice on how we need to be guided going forward.
But when you do, um, contract, there has to be some forced language that he has to communicate with the town manager.
We can, we can include that.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think the other, the other way to do it is through the, through the commission, right? I mean, you're gonna, you you you're gonna have the chief.
Mike, I can't guarantee that the commission's gonna be as good as it is today.
Yeah, right.
You know? We may go back to the good old boy thing where the, uh, police chief runs the commission.
Yeah.
And then how do, and then how do we correct it?
Right, so the conflict still, the conflict still remains within the.
Well, he said, he he said we could get rid of the police commission if we felt we had to then. There's no state law that says you need a police commission?
Well, it, it, once it's, once it's a, you know, this town has dec- decided to have a police commission, so now that commission has certain statutory authority. Uh, you know, if you were going to, basically, as you've designated yourself as a WPCA, you're gonna designate yourself as a police commission. And, you know, you know, I don't know if it's best practice.
So then you'd have elected officials to.
I don't know if it's best practice for one body of nine to be every political body and within the town. Uh, that's a lot of responsibility that you take on for yourself, but, you know, uh.
I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying that that would be the correction if we felt, or if a sitting council felt that we were going that way.
I'm I'm just hoping with your guidance and the police commission that we have on there now, and this council's awareness of what went on and what's transpiring and everything else, that we'll never, ever fall into that again, as long as we keep our commissioners professional and, um, on board. I mean, we had to do the same thing to the Board of Education, you know, now you got a good Board of Education.
I think you need to be guided and take seriously the appointments to the positions. And I think if you do that, and you put qualified people in place, like you currently have, uh, you know, that you should be proceeding professionally going forward. But, you know, ultimately, this is the body that makes those appointments. So if you feel it's going back to an old boys' club, then you need to address it through your appointment power.
In those towns that are listed here, where the, where the chief reports to the town manager, do they not have a police commission for the most part, the ones that are in here?
I think so, or they have some, uh, something short of a a full-blown police commit, there might be a, of advisory, or, uh, I forget what they call them, some of the.
Some instabularies, a lot of them, you know, they, uh, they are headed by a resident state trooper, and they report to the, uh, first select winner town manager.
Well, some of them probably have police commissions, I would guess, a number over here.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure there's, there's.
There's a number of them here.
I'm sure there's quite a few here on this list that have police commissions.
Right, they must have a commission.
You know, and, um, but, you know, they they probably have an ordinance, you know, that created their commission that was rewritten to put the town manager.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what, what the, what the chief reports to the town manager.
In charge. Cause I know Coventry has a police commission.
And and I understand, there are, there are many practices throughout the state that necessarily do not follow proper legal process. Uh, and it's never a problem until someone complains. Uh, so, you know, we can, we have to be guided and work as the law instructs us, or we can not, uh, and it's fine until it becomes an issue. But I think at a minimum, as a department head, absolutely, the chief should be reporting to the town manager, uh, as a department head.
So is the police chief considered a police officer also?
Yes.
Believe, yeah, yes, police do.
But but you don't have to call the, your department head a chief either, you can call your department head something else.
Okay, I mean, only because it says in, you know, the, the art of, the powers of the commissioners, seventy-seven point nine, is that mem, for purposes of the chapter, members of the police department shall include police officers, dispatchers, canine control, and the secretary to the chief of police. It doesn't mention any. It doesn't mention anything about the chief, so that's why I was just asking, does he fall under the classification of police officer?
They, they do if they hold that title.
Okay.
I should be revisited too, Gavin, a canine control officer is two thousand four. Yeah, it should be revised.
It, and-
I have a few weird things in there, probably should be-
But isn't this, does the secretary to the chief, isn't that person in the clerical union?
Uh huh.
So wouldn't they fall under the-
So, so dispatchers are in clerical?
Yeah, that, yeah, right, dispatchers are-
There's no canine control officer, so tho- those should be, that, that should be updated. Probably should go over this whole ordinance. I mean, this has gotta be since-
Well, that was two thousand one it was amended, it says. So it says that the police commission, the police commissioners have the management and supervision of the secretary to the chief of police and, and also to the dispatchers, but yet they're part of the clerical union on there. So the clerical union doesn't have any control over, I mean, if there's a grievance or something, it's not with, is it with the police commission? Is where it gets heard or is it heard through the clerical?
Through the clerical.
So maybe this whole ordinance needs to be reviewed.
It should be redone and brought up to date.
Every, everything relating to the police department needs to be reviewed and revised and updated.
Okay.
So who does that? You, the police commission?
Uh, my office in conjunction with the commission. And then, uh, we can, uh, obviously bring it back to this body to the extent that there are things that require approval of the body, like revision to ordinances and things like that. But I, I would suggest based upon the concerns that I've heard, that we, uh, work with the commission in the first instance and then present to this body what we're talking about, thinking about doing, so that at least moving forward, everyone is on the same page. Uh, ultimately, whoever has the authority to approve will approve at that point, but I think everyone should, uh, there should be, uh, a bright light on everything that's being done.
All right, so you'll work on that. And next is award of bid number sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, fuel boiler chimney system parts, TVES.
Yes, so just one bid that was for, um, obviously that, that fire or mechanical fire what happened there on the roof. Um, and Jensen Mechanical Equipment.
Is this an insurance claim?
Yeah, I believe it is, yeah. I, I, I'm certain that, that it was a claim that, I have to check with Michelle, but it, that was a claim. I'm relatively certain that was a claim.
So I make a motion to award bid number sixteen dash two thousand seventeen eighteen, fuel boiler chimney system parts for TVES to Jensen Mechanical Equipment of New Hartford, Connecticut in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is, uh, approval of bid specs, number one, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, speed trailer for a police department.
Do we have one now? That just broke?
Yeah, we had, um-
They pulled an awful-
Two.
So we had two?
Yes.
All right, that's, that was my question, like, where are we getting to? If we didn't have any. We have two broken ones. Got it.
And I'm assuming that the police, is it Lieutenant Lovelace, he reviewed all of this, so this is?
Yes, his, I, yeah.
This is his?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this the sole source? I mean, it says or equal, but it's all specs from one.
Based on a st-, a stalker, uh, company, uh, spec, I believe he used, yeah, but calls for anything equal to that or better. I don't know, um, what else, uh, he may have used others, I don't have the detail from, from Jimmy.
All the components are pretty much standard.
Sorry?
All the components are pretty much standard on the speed trailers, except maybe the size. But they all have wheel locks, they all have, you know, light bars, solar panels.
How long do they last?
Other ones are s-, over twenty, twenty, yeah.
Has a vandalizer there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're over twenty years old, the other ones.
Yeah.
Do our used ones just need a five KW solar system?
Have a motion?
This is, this is just a request for an R of-
Yeah.
Correct, the, the specs.
Yep.
Um, I make a motion to accept the bid specs for bid number one dash two thousand eighteen nineteen, speed trailers for the North Branford Police Department.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
And next is approval of job description for park ranger position at Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, this is the, um, part-timer, uh, was approved in the budget, uh, for the rec department. There is no, so this is all new, new language for that position.
This is just a motion?
I just have a question on, uh, the requirement for lifting and carrying fifty pounds. How did they arrive at that?
Uh, that's pretty much a, a standard we have for most every, uh, job, uh, requirement. Uh, in this case, um, there, it may not apply that there, as a monitor, probably not going to be involved in lifting or moving things, but they might, so it's, uh-
Plastic cones.
I'm sorry?
Plastic safety cones.
Well, you know, it could be something-
And walnuts, even better.
Are you thinking of buying George?
No, I can do fifty, but, uh, um, you know, u- usually, when, when you put something like that on there, it also precludes some people and it's, uh, it states on here that, um, you'll be, I consider people with, uh, some dis-, uh, disabling, uh, conditions, so. I'm just trying to be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
What's the season for a park monitor?
They're looking for April through like October. That's what they're looking for. So it's, I, I, I think she said it was eight months, it might be November. Um, I just have a question in regards to, um, cause they're requiring the person to have a valid driver's license and provide a copy of their auto insurance. So I'm assuming that the person has to have their own vehicle.
Right.
For this.
Isn't it auto insurance so that they can drive a town vehicle?
Um, well, I, I don't know, this, this was discussed at the Park Rec meeting. Um, I'm, I'm not so sure that there is a town vehicle.
There currently is no vehicle assigned to Recreation.
Um, and so if they have to use their own vehicle, are we paying mileage?
I, I think we're obligated to pay mileage, but I'll be-
Yeah, but we only have a set of, isn't it like five thousand dollars?
Correct.
So if we're paying mileage, that, that's gonna cut the season, when they run out of five thousand dollars, they're done.
Right, because of the South, so I, I mean, that discussion did come up at the Park Rec meeting about if they have, if they're supplying their own vehicle, then the, paying them mileage, or if they use a town vehicle.
I know folks who do the park checks currently do not pay mileage. Probably be able to do park checks down, just the hourly rate of their-
They drive it pre-estate, right?
Everybody walk.
They need to turn the lights off up in Northbridge, man. I'll do it as long as they don't weigh fifty pounds.
All right, somebody wanna make, uh, a motion to approve the, um-
I make a motion to approve the job description for the seasonal park monitor.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, so do we already have park monitor?
No.
No.
Then what, what we might-
We have, we have folks that do a part of this job. They do the park checks, if you rent Lake North Farms Park, they go out prior to their picnic, make sure everything is closed, after you've completed trash at lakes afterwards, then you give your deposit back once that person signs off that-
They're employees, cause they're current employees.
They're, they're employees, yeah.
They're current employees.
This person's gonna do that, plus go shut the lights off at the park, bring the pickleball nets in, all the other functions that Lauren wants to have done that aren't-
And carry fifty pounds.
And carry fifty pounds.
Well, it says up to, it doesn't say.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Preparation transfers.
Uh, two, two slight transfers, uh, the first being a, uh, covering of the over expenditure in her, one of her gift funds, uh, Lauren Davis moved some money around from the general fund. The second being, you recall at budget time, Chief Seward had mentioned that the air pack bottles are all expiring, I believe in two years. Uh, he was able to buy about a dozen last year and buying about a dozen this year again to offset that significant expense that'll be coming down the road two years. He's trying to whittle the way out a little at a time and he closed some other POs out to move some money off that account.
Thank you. Motion to approve the transfers.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
So are we doing E after executive session, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
H, right.
So we're up to G. Now, E was the approval of the collective bargaining agreement with Department of Public Works, but we don't know what that is. So that's the purpose of executive session?
Correct, exactly, yeah, we'll skip over that, come back.
Tax refund.
All right, next item is, uh, citizen statements.
No, no tax refund.
Tax refund, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Our next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Hello, David Palumbo, you all know me by now, many years. First, I just wanna take a moment to, and I've said it to probably many years, my mother passed and I got an outpouring support from this community that was the most amazing thing I've seen in my life. Uh, you know, we got a, we got a great town here and I wanna thank all the boards and commissions, you guys at the council, for the support, the cards, the letters, the baskets, everything that everybody had sent, the moment of silences, it was much appreciated to myself and my family. And all the volunteering I did, I would do it all again for as long as I have to for what I saw come out in this community. We're all friends, neighbors, relatives, cousins, whatever we are, we grew up together, it was much appreciated. Second of all, I really appreciate you putting me back on. I'm honored to, to volunteer and be a part of this community and give back. And I think more people should, I've always said that. Um, and you put your faith in me, you've got a great commission, you've got a great council here, we can work together. And as far as I, I grieve in, I've said it forever, policy, protocol, procedure, transparency. It'll win between both the council and the commission. I think every commission, every board in this town should answer to this council and have dialogue. I've said it for ten years and that's the only way our community will work if we have that amongst all boards and commissions. I appreciate your time and effort, thank you.
Thank you.
I have something to say.
Got it.
Yeah, here we go, it's gonna be a little bit longer. Uh, I was doing some thinking about this, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, I don't know if I should be standing out there or sitting here, but I've been thinking about this police chief thing and the money that we had to spend. And I've seen this done before and what I was thinking was, take the second in charge, who is Jimmy Lovelace, lieutenant, move him up temporarily, acting is what we used to call it, to the police chief spot. Leave his spot vacant. Four year, half a year, a year. We save that, we save that salary, we save the medical benefits and just let it go with that. While, while these guys, I know it's, it's gonna take the, the police commission time to get things together for how they're, they're gonna do the hiring of a new chief. And I just thought it might be a good idea, I'm just passing it by you guys, whatever you think and-
I, I think that the police commission, that's one of the reasons why they're having a special meeting tomorrow night. I, I think that they need to discuss that in detail and I think that's what they're going to do.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, in today's society and the way things change, you cannot run without a, a experienced police chief in this place. This place has been run for four, thirty-five years, substandard, substandard.
I always, I always thought that's, I always thought that's what the sec-, what the second in charge did.
The, the second in charge has been there a little over a year. He can't run a police department like that.
Well, people-
It takes him five years to learn his position. You can't subject the guy to that stress.
They, they made him a lieutenant and-
Mister Mayor, just a point of order, if we could just have the, uh, we're on the agenda for just statements of, uh, the public and we shouldn't get any dialogue, dialogue.
That, that's my opinion.
Okay.
All right. Any other citizen statements, petitions, move into execu-, a motion to move in the executive session?
So moved.
Um, but do, who do we have to include in this? The town attorney, is Franny part of it?
Yeah.
The, uh, Courtney George.
And Courtney George. Labor attorney, Courtney George.
Courtney George, please commission.
Is, Anthony, is Franny here for public works or not?
Franny's here, yeah.
Okay. So Franny will be here for the public works, as a part of it?
I heard Courtney George.
Yeah, and there was not a second.
Second.
Thank you.